I'd like to invite Caleb and Ethan Pirkowski, Troop 68, to come up and lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Pirkowski.
I'm going home to watch.
I'll try to get them back, too. We'll start off with our youth report. Michael Conklin.
Good evening. The last day of classes for high school students is this Wednesday. Local exams and regents will start Thursday. June 26th is the last day of school for all Port Jervis district students. The Port Jervis High School graduation is June 27th. If any students are looking for volunteer hours, HPE and ASK are holding a Port Jervis City School District Summer Reading Program, and they are looking for volunteers. Sign up for as few or as many weeks as you're able to. There are two sessions, Monday and Wednesday from 9:00 to 11:00, and Tuesday and Thursday from 9:00 to 11:00. Majestic Theater in Matamoros is hosting a summertime fun series with select free movies every Wednesday, Tuesday, and Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Check your website or Facebook for more information. The Port Jervis Rack Department has a great summer schedule. Look forward on their website. Children can participate in many activities during supervised playground hours. Activities include street hockey, basketball, softball, kickball, tennis, wiffle ball, and many more. More games and card games are also available. All activities are free of charge unless they are otherwise indicated. They will also be having a free summer lunch program funded by the New York State Education Department, Monday through Friday from July 7th to August 8th. Lunches will be delivered to Church Street Park, Farnum Park, Verite Park, and New Center each weekday at 12:00 p.m. This is a free program for all Port Jervis School District students or Port Jervis youth aged 18 or under. They also have some traps planned to pause and pause New York Yankees baseball game in Thorn Park. This boom read is the theme for this year's summer reading program at the Port Jervis Track Library. Registration begins June 16th and runs to July 8th to August 13th. Registration is required for all programs. They have something planned for kids of all ages. There's lots to do for kids in this area in our summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. We do not have a senior report or veterans report. Community Service Saturdays, this Saturday from 9:00 to noon, we will be back at the canal. We spent the last two weeks at the community garden. It's been a good turnout and a nice job getting a couple of new beds in there, and a lot of stuff is growing. There's a lot of strawberries, I'll tell you that, right now in there, and so maybe we'll have some, maybe we'll send some our way. Okay. I'd like to invite Elaine Cooper up to the podium. She's going to speak for a few minutes on the 2014 Crop Walk. Now, it won't be, I think it's, what, October?
October.
But she's already planning.
Oh, yes. Our team likes to get a head start on things. I am Elaine Cooper, as Mayor Decker said, and it would be my privilege the last year and again this year to co-chair the Crop Walk with Mrs. Linda O'Donnell of Matamoros.
This regard did always bother the curtain. It's always tech.
All right. All right. As Mayor Decker indicated, our walk is coming in October, and that will be our eighth annual Crop Walk. To put that in the context for you, we'll be one of about 1,400 crop walks that will happen across the nation, usually in the spring and the fall, and it's estimated that those walks this year will help about 2,200 local agencies across the country, like we here with our walk help local agencies. Last year, we had some of our best turnout as far as walkers. We had slightly over 200 walkers. Those walkers come from churches all the way from Sparabush all the way over to Dingmans, where I am from, and also from the student councils of Port Jervis and Delaware Valley High School. Last year, those faithful walkers raised slightly over $14,200. And 25% of that, gentlemen, stays in the community, and with that, we are able to help about eight food pantries. The 75% goes out through the work of Church World Service. They respond, for example, to tornadoes in our country or like to the typhoon in the Philippines. So that is a wonderful combination of helping hungry people right here and around the world. Each year, we like to have a shirt for our walkers, sort of add to the spirit of the day and sort of lift up, help us go out with one color as we walk through your streets. But as you can see, those are the names of businesses and service organizations that help us fund this, so that it's totally separate from any monies that we would raise to help hungry people. And businesses and service organizations in the area have been really helpful in helping us do that each year. So right now, we have, we're set to go with Matamoros. We are starting out from the Fire Mitz Pavilion. So my purpose tonight is to come before you and seek your approval, so that we as a team can work as we do over the summer to work out the details and to know that we have your support and you're okay, to move ahead with your approval, to start out from that Fire Mitz Pavilion and loop through your streets and once again, raise money to help hungry people. Thank you for the here.
Thank you. Again, what's the date? October?
October 19.
Thank you. I now like to open the podium to public comment. Five-minute limit. Anybody who'd like to speak on any subject, just please state your name and the ward you live in.
Good evening. Lorraine Marquez, Third Ward. Well, guys, it's with great trepidation that I stand up here tonight. Myself and my neighbors over the weekend had a bit of a street conference, and we were speaking about the Spanjenbergs Lot. Ever since Dennis retired, it's been a big problem. It's not being maintained. It's, I know that it's probably home for rodents, ticks, fleas, all of the anesthetes, plus it doesn't look too nice on the neighborhood. There's also a house on the corner of Mountain and Orange, and myself as well as several others have reported this. Windows were broken out of the house about six weeks ago. A few of the windows were boarded up, not all. So there's broken glass around, and the weed and the grass length is definitely up above my knees. I don't want to see our DPWs guys get hurt with any of the glass shards that are out there. It is tagged by the bank. It's very, very overgrown, and once again, it's a huge eyesore. I know that two of my neighbors, let's see, Mike took the overflowing garbage cans that were sitting in front of that house, which I don't know what the house number is, there's no numbers on it. It could be 38, it could be 40, it could be 42, who knows? But it's a corner of Orange and Mountain. Mike took the overflowed garbage cans that had been sitting out there for I don't know how many months. He dragged them out to the curb last week, and they were finally empty. Mike and Christine have been cutting the grass along the sidewalk of the Spanjenbergs Lot. During the winter time, I know that Mike takes a snow blower out there to make sure that the snow is clear for the kids standing at the bus stop. So it's received very, very little maintenance. With the new owners, to tell you the truth, we should they might just sell it. Let somebody's head get over.
I do know that it was mentioned.
You don't want to make enemies with anybody either, so it's, you know.
It's just like a curmudgeon or something.
Yeah.
You know, so it's a big dilemma with us and all. It's very, it's like those of us that are holding on to our houses with the skin of our teeth and everything, and then we see this going on, plus all the empty homes that are all over the place now. And, you know, we're trying to do our best to take care of things. I know the DPW was good enough to come out to take care of the weeded mess in front of one of the houses I horned up a couple of weeks ago.
Well, we are making all those attempts, especially with the vacant houses, if you read one. We've been in contact, I've been in contact with the building official because somebody told me about the lot and the problems there, so it should be ordered if it hasn't been already. But did you make any contact with the building official's office?
We all have over the years.
No, but I mean recently, have you, over the recent problems?
I did, I did about the house on the corner of Orange and Mountain, and I also threw the Spanjenbergs Lot at the same time.
Okay. Just, I would suggest that in the future, because that makes it quicker if you contact them.
Lorraine, we brought that up at codes, and I'm sure they've issued violation notices already, all three of those, they talked about.
Yeah, it's like the Spanjenbergs Lot owners need to have somebody take care of that on a regular basis. I know that my one neighbor does lawn cutting and racking and leaf blowing and all of that stuff, so he would do it on a regular basis if they wanted to hire him, so.
Well, as soon as they get the violation notice, they're going to be aware that they have to do it.
Yeah, yeah, but this is an ongoing thing. It's like every single year, we have to go and do this, so we're just trying to bring closure to it. We're trying to remedy the situation when we want it to go away.
Okay.
So, okay?
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Hearing none. I have actually three approval of minutes. The first is for our regular meeting on May 27th. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. And then we had a motion that failed back on April 28th on our April 14th regular meeting. Mr. Oni was absent that night, and we couldn't pull up form, so I'd like to make a motion to pass the regular meeting of April 14th. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Bell. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? And there was, Mr. Bell, you abstained, Mr. Cunningham, you also abstained.
So there were three of us?
And Mr. Walagroski abstained. But you weren't here at the meeting. You weren't here to approve that meeting. You were at that meeting.
I'm abstaining now.
You were here at the meeting, but you weren't here to vote that night, so I couldn't get five people.
You were at the 414 meeting, but you weren't at the following meeting to approve the 414.
I got you.
Okay. So we needed you to help us approve the 414. So again, I'll make that up. I have, Mr. Bell, I can't take, Mr. Cunningham, or Mr. Bell.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bobozzo, second by Mr. Hendrick. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Two extensions.
Two extensions, one absent, but I've got a five priority, so I'm good.
Thank you. All right, we got it. Okay, committee reports, finance, insurance. Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll pay some bills first, hopefully. Some of the larger bills, Social Security for May, $46,602.58. Tapco, crosswalk units, $12,329.27. New York State Insurance Club, 25% down payment policy renewals, $74,755.10. From the Capital Fund, Fuller Automotive, major repair DPW dump truck, $12,971.64. GHD Consulting Engineers, order clarifier engineering, $15,280. Kesteros Associates, one half of the raw water pumps for water mains, $39,200. Totals from the General Fund, $186,304.97. From the Water Fund, $30,282.13. From the Capital Fund, $69,650.64. For a total of $286,237.74, make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bell to pay the bills, second by Mr. Cunningham. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
I have a resolution of the common council of the city of Port Jervis regarding capital appropriations. Whereas the city of Port Jervis Finance Committee has reviewed the activity of approved capital fund transactions, and whereas the city of Port Jervis Common Council recognizes that the use of unexpendable funds only be used for the purpose of similar capital project expenditures and/or for the reduction of capital debt, is hereby resolved that the city of Port Jervis elects to allow the use of $13,000 of unused funds from the monies previously appropriated for purchase of new dump trucks from the 2009 serial bond appropriation for the purpose of completing a major repair to an existing dump truck to extend its useful life. And I'll make that a motion.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Cunningham for a resolution of capital appropriations. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
The Finance Committee will meet next Monday, the 16th, following DPW of fire emergency management. That's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fire Emergency Management from Mr. Walagroski. Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some correspondence from the department secretary, Honorable Mayor Kelly Decker, members of the city council, subject fire department, April 25 and 50-year members for the month of May, Mahakama Cook and Ladder, Joe John Cole, 51 years, Francis Westfall, 26 years, Stephen Turner, 41 years, Nerosync Engine Company Number One, Thomas McKeon, 41 years, William Brewster, 29 years, Delaware Engine Company Number Two, Stanley Buzik, 29 years, Barry Long, 54 years, Excelsior Engine Company Number Five, Robert Dunn, 59 years, Thomas Gallendorf, 52 years, Tri-State Host Company Number Six, Craig Cherry, 40 years, James McGlott Jr., 48 years, Anthony Olenek, 40 years, and Arthur O'Mcuff Jr., 28 years. Richard F. Drew, department secretary, make a motion. We accept that. Second.
Mr. Siegel has a motion to approve that report, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Also, Honorable Mayor Kelly Decker, members of the city council, subject fire department, April 25 and 50-year members for the month of June, Mahakama Cook and Ladder, Peter Malek, 42 years, Nerosync Engine Company Number One, Lester Smith, 42 years, Richard Cawful, 40 years, John Shannon, 55 years, Delaware Engine Company Number Two, Leslie Fox, 49 years, Joseph Farr, 31 years, Joseph McCulsky, 45 years, Joseph Mills, 42 years, Alan Moser, 25 years, Jeffrey Moser, 25 years, Valor Rescue and Salvage Number Three, Ronnie Eith, 47 years, Alex Greck, 50 years, Howie Engine Company Number Four, Raymond Finch, 43 years, William Young, 41 years, Michael Sicaleese, 30 years, Excelsior Engine Company Number Five, Craig Brown, 32 years, Michael O'Mcuff, 28 years, and Tri-State Host Six, Harry Barton, 49 years, and Alan Cherry, 51 years. Make the motion, accept that as well.
Second.
Motion to approve the June 25 and 50-year members by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Bell. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Also, Honorable Mayor Decker, members of the city council, subject department company deletions. Dear Mayor Decker, members of the city council, it's hereby requested that the below-name members of the Port Jervis Fire Department and Company stated be removed from the active membership rolls effective this date. And with sad personal regret, Thomas Gallenankis, Howie Engine Company Number Four, reason went to God on May 31st, 2014. And Tommy was a dear friend of mine. He was in the company when I signed down 49 years ago, and he remained actively involved in company functions until shortly before his death. He'll be sadly missed by us. Arthur Joe O'Mcuff Jr., Tri-State Host Company Number Six, reason transferred to Sparabush Engine Company. Respect we've cemented. Richard F. Drew, want to make a motion, accept that as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel for department deletions, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. And so, both of those members, great members. Joe put a lot of years in at Tri-State Host Company Number Six, and Tommy was, made the best home fries around, right?
Enjoyed friends.
Gonna miss him.
Nicest man you'll ever meet.
Nicest guy, absolutely. With regrets, we have a second and a motion, and any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
No, that's it, I'm sorry. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
You're meeting Monday 16th, correct? Sounds good, right?
Monday, that's what it is.
Okay. Code and legislative, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you. I have a revision to the abandoned vacant and boarded up buildings law that we passed last due to an oversight in the fee schedule. Whereas Local Law Number Four of 2014 dealing with abandoned vacant and boarded up properties within the city was adopted by this council on May 27, 2014. And whereas Section 10 of that local law sets forth fees to be paid by owners and mortgagees of vacant or abandoned buildings or property to cover administrative costs incurred by the city in registering and processing the paperwork on such buildings and property and the cost of monitoring the conditions and maintenance of such buildings and property by the city. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. The fee set forth in Section 10 of Local Law Number Four of 2014 shall be charged according to the following schedule. The initial fee shall be increased from $250 to $1,200. The fee for Section 10A shall be increased to $2,200, 10B to $3,200, 10C to $4,200, 10D to $5,200, 10E to $6,200, 10F to $7,200, 10G to $8,200, and 10H to $9,200, and 10I to $10,200. In addition, the city may add interest to any unpaid fees monthly at the maximum legal rate permitted by law in the event fees are not received within 30 days after they are due. Make a motion, we accept those changes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Siegel for the fee schedule change on the abandoned vacant homes, a second by Mr. Bobozzo. Discussion.
Yeah, I got a question.
Okay.
We're charging $1,200 just to register that house?
Yeah, because all the fees in order for us to register, take care of the property, if we have to send people out to take care of the property, it covers all those fees. It's about $100 a month.
Okay.
And then it's compounded each year after that.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a problem to compound.
The whole idea, Frank, is to make it high enough that maybe it'll get done very quickly as opposed to waiting and waiting for it to come up to that kind of money.
The initial $250, they wouldn't even think of registering it.
Yeah.
So any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. There were 102 violation notices issued in the month of May by the Buildings Department. That means that we're very serious about cleaning up the city. Yards, courts, building violations, rental unit agent notification forms, building permits, pool permits, et cetera, must be properly done. And I think that by getting this done and cutting down on the violation notices, I think the city will look much better. The next meeting is scheduled for July 2nd at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And the code agendas and minutes are on the portjervisny.org webpage. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. A little update from the DPW department. Our garbage and recycling will be on normal schedule for the next two weeks. Yard waste will be picked up at your ward the same day that your paper pickup will be on Fridays. Just a reminder that the burning pit and the compost piles are open every Saturday morning from 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and the first full week of the month from 7:15 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. If you watch, if you look in town, you'll see that DPW department is out right now painting the stop bar and the crosswalk markings on the roads, and of course, this is controlled by the weather. Our next DPW meeting will be on Monday, June 16th. It will be here at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers. See you then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank the DPW for all the patchwork they've done down at Tri-State. They've had a nice job down there. There was a lot of holes.
I think you've done the fourth ward, right? And they'll be doing each ward by each week. Police Committee, Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The police committee met on June 2nd. You all received a copy of the May monthly police report, and I motion to accept them at this time.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick to approve the police report. That was a second by Mr. Oni. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Youth Safety Day was held on Saturday, and Dare graduation was conducted today for NS Cool School fifth grade classes. Approximately 100 children graduated from the program. Last month, approximately 100 graduated from the HPE program. Officer Scott Robertson and Officer Frank McGrath, Town and Deer Park Police Department, partnered to provide this excellent crime prevention education. Special thanks to Officer McGrath for stepping in and assisting us with teaching the remaining six weeks of the program. I have correspondence from Chief Warden addressed to Sergeant Jason Vicarello. Dear Jason, I'd like to personally congratulate you for receiving your permanent civil service appointment to the rank of Police Sergeant for the City of Port Jervis Police Department effective June 3rd, 2014. Over the past year, you have demonstrated excellent leadership skills and an excellent working knowledge of law enforcement practices and procedures. Your supervisory role of developing and guiding young officers during their field training is commendable, as you serve as a role model for junior officers to follow. In addition, your high level of pride, enthusiasm, and commitment to duty in our community is commendable and is evidenced by your actions while on and off duty. Congratulations on your well-earned permanent supervisory promotion. I remain highly confident that you will continue to excel in your duties and be an incredible asset to the Port Jervis Police Department and the residents of our community. That's signed by William J. Warden, Chief of Police. And I motion for the permanent civil service appointment of Jason Vicarello to the rank of Police Sergeant for the City of Port Jervis Police Department effective June 3rd, 2014.
Second.
I have a motion, Hendrick, a second by Mr. Bell, to permanently appoint Jason Vicarello on the date of June 3rd as a permanent sergeant. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
And finally, the next police committee meeting is Monday, July 7th at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. On the liaison, CDA, Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The CDA last met on Wednesday, May 28th. Ms. Maginski will continue to formulate the application for the 2014 Consolidated Funding Application, wherein the deadline is June 16th. I will motion under executive session for consideration a 5% match for the application and anticipate proposing a resolution thereafter. She's also continuing to formulate the application for the 2013 New York State Community Development Block Grant Program, and that deadline is June 30th. At this time, I'd like to introduce a resolution updating the 2012 agreement between the City of Port Jervis and the Port Jervis Community Development Agency authorizing the CDA as subrecipient of CPPG funds on behalf of the city as follows. Resolution of Common Council of the City of Port Jervis authorizing the mayor of the City of Port Jervis to sign an agreement between the Port Jervis Community Development Agency and the City of Port Jervis for the administration of small cities' community development block grant funds, whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council is duly authorized to enter into
authorized to enter into contracts and agreements with benefits to the citizens of the city of Port Jervis, and whereas New York State Homes and Community Renewal through its Office of Community Renewal.